I'll tell you what I really said afterwards. Good evening, everybody. We're to begin here shortly, so if you can ensure your cellphones are off or on silent. And ensure your microphones are on. All right, today's February 3rd, 2025. Today is a committee of the whole meeting for Barberton City Council. Before we begin the committee of the whole meeting, we do have individual committee meetings. Before we do the individual committee meetings, we do have, due to some scheduling conflicts, we're gonna kick today off with a presentation and some discussion about the ask for the foundation, the terms, and the new city building. So I'll just open up the floor. I think there's enough there, but if not... All right. That works. Jason Dodson with Russell and Andres, out of our Akron office. And first of all, thank you all for the time this evening. I would tell you, this is hopefully gonna be the first of a number of monthly updates that we're gonna have here over the next year and a half or so, as we continue on with this project and hopefully bring it to fruition. So Laura, if you don't mind, go to the next page. Thank you. And I did bring handouts, because I know oftentimes, the formatting on these things gets goofy, and I know the TV, it's a little bit difficult to read. So I think probably one of the first things to do is to kinda talk about what, where we started, kinda what we've done so far. I know we've all met individually, so I don't wanna belabor, you know, some of the slides here that you guys already have seen some form of and already generally know. But as we've talked about, you know, I think the initial time that somebody called out the building is not being, you know, what the city needs operationally was back in the 1950s. And I think really since that time, there's been multiple efforts to figure out what we can do with this building to make it actually serve both the residents of Barberton and the folks who work in this building. As you all know, security right now is not an ideal situation within the building. The city has made steps over the years to improve that. We do have a single point of entry at this point. We do have it secured to some extent, but even the way that you kinda come up through there, it's not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. We still, to this point, do not have a soli port on the building. We don't have secure parking for the judges. So while we have made advances, we certainly don't have a building that you would see with today's security. In addition to that, we also have a building that is not ADA compliant. I know we've talked about multiple examples with folks in wheelchairs who have to give witness statements out in the parking lot because they're not able to get into the building, people who aren't able to attend weddings for loved ones. Right now, we actually have an employee at the clerk's office who has to work down, I think, in the basement of the building because they currently are on crutches, and we currently don't have a functioning elevator in the building. So there's no other way for that employee to be able to get upstairs to be able to do her work. So it is an ongoing issue in terms of just ADA compliance, the elevators, and everything in between there. As we've talked about before, multiple times a year, at this point in time, we have some flooding that occurs in the police station. Hopefully, we don't see anything in the near future like we saw last August, where there were inches of water on the police station floor, water pouring in. And again, that happened at the time when we were meeting with a number of you, you know, when we had that larger flood. Luckily, a lot of the city didn't have the issues that it has historically had, but certainly the police department had a number of issues that evening. Additionally, as we've talked in the past, the court system itself lacks adequate separation between the court staff, the victims, the defendants, who oftentimes are sitting in the same hall, riding on the same elevator, bumping into one another. So in terms of what we've accomplished so far here in the last year, year and a half or so, the city has done in-depth space planning with all of the elected officials in this building, as well as the department heads. From that, we have developed through Haas and Stop Architects conceptual drawings for both this building, as well as the new city hall building. In addition, we've developed schematic drawings for what would be the new city hall building. I'm sorry, we've developed the schematic drawings for this building, but we do not yet have schematic drawings for this building, or for the 480 West Husk Building. We have purchased the Masonic Temple next door, which is gonna be the site of where the addition to this building would be located. We have begun demolition activities for that building, bless you. We have been awarded state funds to be able to demol- to pay for 75% of the demolition of that building. We're currently working through, right now, with the State Historic Preservation Office, on being able to use those funds. And we're getting some letters of support from the Historic Society and the like, to be able to use those funds to tear the building down. And we also have completed abatement on that building, and I think you all know, are currently working through the process of removing a number of items from the building before it would be demolished, to be able to use in the new building. And also then are gonna be doing the auction process with Kiko Engineers in order to auction off some of the items within the building. We've also done preliminary pricing for the project, and we've obtained numerous sources of funds for the project. And as I think the council president indicated, we have submitted a formal request to the foundation, and a draft term sheet to the foundation that encapsulates kinda the details or the terms of that request. And I'll talk about that here in the, both the project budget, the sources of funds we've obtained, as well as then the details of the term sheet over the next few pages. So on this slide here, we see the project budget, which ultimately totals $28.9 million and change. Of that, about $23 million is gonna be your construction budget, which includes your contingency. You can see in the items in purple there, those are the items where we have already spent funds. We've only spent a very small amount of money to, relative to the project total, to acquire the Masonic Temple, to acquire the 480 West Husk Building, and to do the preliminary design for, you know, again, the conceptual design for both buildings, and the schematic design for this building. We have recently, I think the number was about $23,000, spent on the abatement, Mr. Tiedeki reminded me, for the building next door. So that number is not refl- it's, would actually be part of the demolition of the Masonic Temple number there under miscellaneous, but it's not highlighted in purple because it's not the entire amount. Then if you go to the next slide, this slide details kinda the, where the money would be coming from, and what we have secured in order to fund the project. And so what we see here is that, to date, we either have, have in our possession, or have secured, $12,425,000 for the project. That includes $7,675,000 from state and federal sources, and then only about $120,000 is actual general fund spending. As you can see here, as you kinda go down through the list, the courts, through the two judges who are here with us this evening, have not only contributed for the acquisition of the Masonic Temple, but have also committed to spending an additional $3.25 million in court fees. Those funds, in addition to the state and federal money, as well as a small amount of money so far from the foundation, ultimately total up to the $12,425,000. I will tell you, if, just to maybe highlight a couple on here, the million dollars that we got last year from the one-time funds, there were only, I think about a dozen and a half awards in Summit County of that funding, and we were one of the larger amounts of money that we received on that. The $500,000 is probably a number that is relatively new. It was not actually in our kind of forecast when we would have all met in August. And that was because the finance director was kind of holding on to those funds, and letting everything else play out. And then as we met with the finance director and the financial advisor, they had reminded us that, hey, that $500,000 is still in the city's possession from a few years ago, in terms of capital money from the state to fund a safety building project. So that has helped us with getting kinda the gap closed between what we were looking at before, in terms of project cost with the funding sources that we have now. And so ultimately, again, out of the $28.9 million, 12.4 of that has been either secured or, you know, we have been awarded the funds. And only 16.5 million would be left in terms of what would actually have to be bonded for the project. I will tell you, in terms of putting these type of projects together in the capital stacks that I've worked on in the past, this is, for this type of project, a large number of different sources that are going into the project. And I think it is, in large part, because of, quite frankly, as we've talked to the state, as we've talked to the federal government, as we've talked to other entities, you know, the need is there for this building to be renovated, and for us to have a new city hall. The only other thing that I will note on this slide here is, unfortunately, the audience can't see it particularly well there, we do have another, somewhere between $750,000 and 1.184 million, that is potentially coming towards the project. Those are, or that money would be in the federal appropriations process right now. In the House budget, the House version of the budget, it's 1.184 million, and the Senate version, it's 750,000. As we sit here right now, I don't think anybody can tell you whether that money will actually get appropriated this year, when it will get appropriated this year. What I will tell you is, out of what we've seen in the first couple weeks of the administration, there's nothing tied to that money that would trigger, you know, like an alarm bell within the administration. It's money that's allocated for the police department, for technology, security, and audiovisual equipment. There's not any DEI or other strings that have kinda given rise to reviewing other federal awards. So I do believe that if they do appropriations, and they do earmarks this year, that that is money that would be coming to the project without much worry. But as we sit here right now, given everything that's going on, we don't have that programmed into the budget, but I did wanna note that it is a potential additional funding source that may come in. All right. So then, on the next page, this breaks down, after you apply those one-time funds of 12.4 million against the $28.9 million budget, you have the 16.5 million of bonds that would be issued. This breaks down, then, essentially what the sources of the debt service will be over the life of those bonds. Now, one thing to note is, under what we're working on with the foundation, they would be putting in $500,000 for the first 19 years. So you have 19 years of debt service. It's gonna look essentially like what you have in this box here. And then after that, in years 20 through 25, that debt service is, you're not gonna have that. And so what we essentially have projected as we've built this, is a series of bonds that would be for the amount of money that would be tied to the foundation debt service, and then a separate series that would be tied to every other funding source that would come in. So you'd have a 19-year set of bonds, and a 25-year set of bonds that would come into play. And ultimately, what you are looking at, and really the two red numbers are the numbers that are key, when you take the average of that, of that 25 years, even though you're gonna have those two different series, you see your average debt service is the one number that circled here, the 1,127. And you see the other number that circled, which is your non-general fund funding sources, and you see it's 1,080. So we have about $41,000 that if everything, you know, if you didn't spend any general fund money whatsoever, that you would need to go into the general fund for. Now, what you do not see reflected on here is, we know we've got about a $25,000 a year general fund savings from not leasing space for the finance department anymore. We know we've got about $40,000 to $50,000 savings from moving the active adult center between rent and utility savings that we're not gonna pay. So from our perspective, and as we were given marching orders from the finance director and the city's financial advisor, we essentially have a general fund neutral budget for debt service for the project going forward. So not only are we only spending out of 12.4 million in upfront money, $120,000 from the general fund, which was spent for all the drawings we've all seen so far, we've only got, you know, somewhere between $0 and $25,000 a year projected for the general fund for debt service going forward. And again, we don't have calculated in there the $30,000 we're gonna have to spend this year to fix the elevator, that, you know, those type of expenses that are coming out of the general fund now, that we don't have to worry about doing going forward. So I, we're very comfortable when we look at a general fund deficit of, you know, $25,000 to $50,000, when we know we have those type of savings on the books, that are, that are gonna be easy for us to realize. Back one. Thanks, Laura. All right. So then, in terms of the term sheet with the foundation, through our discussions with the foundation, one of the things that we've kind of run into is, their current spending policy limits them to spending 10% of their corpus on any one grant. And so that's kinda pegged us at the $9.5 million that you see here, and that you saw in the term sheet. What that equates to, then, is 19 years of $500,000 payments totals out to the $9.5 million. That first $500,000 payment would be in the first year in which debt service would be due. And I can tell you right now, with where we're at, that probably would be in calendar year either 2026, which might even be just a half payment in 2026, or into calendar year 2027, just in terms of the lag between when we would issue debt, and when that would start needing to be being repaid. And then it would go for 19 years from there. What we've proposed is that, if we were to sell the buildings, or if we would pay the debt service off early, then that grant would terminate, and that grant has to be used specifically for this building and the other building. We can't take that money and go use it for some other purpose. So we tried to, at least in what we proposed to the foundation, tried to put some, I guess, what I'd call guardrails on future use of that money, and terminating the money if we weren't using it for that purpose anymore. And then the other piece of the term sheet is the sale of the Yagan Building. The sales price for the Yagan Building would be $150,000. One piece that's important is, we would sell the building in its as-is condition. I can tell you, while the purchase price is not, you know, like, a number that's gonna knock anybody's socks off of, or socks off, the other side of that is that we've got some pretty serious costs in that building if we continue to own it. You know, we're doing a lot right now in order to talk with downtown property owners about getting their buildings up to code, and, you know, we've got some pretty hefty numbers in getting that building up to code ourselves. And that's just with the exterior of the building. So the sale of the Yagan Building is just as much cost avoidance as it is bringing money back into the project. Right now, IT and storage are in that building. Those would both move to the new city hall. And so there's probably gonna be some period of time where there's gonna be a nominal lease between the foundation and the city, where that space is gonna be leased back to us. I mean, we specified in the term sheet, it would be nominal, like, a dollar a year, a dollar a month, until then we're able to relocate over to the new building. Now, the one thing I will tell you on the term sheet, everybody here has the initial draft. We obviously are gonna get a counter back from the foundation, and we'll work back and forth to see ultimately where that goes. And the plan is then, with that term sheet, to bring that both to council in March, as well as the foundation for their March 20th meeting. So we will be back here in the not-too-distant future, talking about what the final version of that term sheet will look like that we'll present to both you and the board. Thank you, Laura. Now, this slide with the formatting changes didn't come out well, so luckily, you guys have the printed version in front of you. What I wanna talk about here with this slide is kind of, what are the next steps in front of us, in terms of, you know, once we go through and we get that term sheet approved with the foundation, and we generally know in principle, everybody's playing from the same playbook, and we're gonna move forward with the project. So we've got three different tracks in terms of what happens at that point in time. The first track is the construction track. And at that point, we would then turn our attention to hiring what's called a construction manager at risk. That's gonna be the person that you bring in, that's gonna work with your design team in order to get their design, you know, make sure that they're in agreement that what they're designing can be built. They're gonna take into budgetary considerations as they work through that process. They're gonna bid the project out to subcontractors. They're gonna develop what is called a guaranteed maximum price. You see GMP here, because I didn't have a lot of space in the boxes, so I used the abbreviation. They're gonna come up with an initial guaranteed maximum price based on that design work, based on working with subcontractors. And ultimately, then, they're gonna give us a final guaranteed maximum price. So if you think of, kind of, what Mike has been doing up to this point, in terms of that management of the project, that construction manager comes on board. They do that piece of representing the city at the design table. They also then are gonna be the contractor who you would commonly think of as your general contractor, who's gonna be responsible for, they're probably gonna self-perform some of the trade work. And then they're also gonna be responsible for soliciting the bids from the other trades, and sitting on top and managing the trades to make sure that those subcontractors get done as well. And they're the ones who are gonna be basically our main construction partner throughout the process. The second track that we're gonna come out of, and work on as we get the term sheet approved, then, is gonna be the design track. And I know there's been some emails with council in terms of what that looks like. But essentially, the next step in our process is schematic design for the new city hall building. So again, we've already got most of the schematic design done for this building. There's a little bit more work that does need to be done on that, just kinda going back to the elected officials and department heads, making sure there's nothing else we need to adjust. And then the bulk of the schematic design's gonna be in that new building. That's gonna get you to about 30%. You kinda wanna align that 30% with bringing your construction manager at risk on board at that same period of time. Then you're gonna go into design development, which is gonna bring you up to about 60% of design. Again, your CMR is gonna work with your design professional in that window. And then you're gonna be at construction documents, which is gonna get you up to about 90, 95% of your design. And that would be what everybody else in the world calls, like, your blueprints. I mean, that's what your construction documents are gonna look like to a layperson. And ultimately, those documents then go into the building department. You work through with the building department, and you get those plans reviewed, and ultimately approved. And again, those final plans are what the final bids are gonna be taken off of, knowing that your CMR is gonna be working through design development, and through the construction drawings, and working with the trades, and pricing things, and finding alternatives to what might have initially been designed. And then everything kinda comes together in that last point with construction and design, when you get those buildings done, when you get your final pricing for construction. And then the third track is the finance and legal track. And so obviously, you don't wanna pay lawyers, you don't wanna pay financial advisors. Before you get to a point where you know the foundation's gonna be in on the $500,000, and the board said, yes, we agree with this term sheet, go out and start drawing up agreements, start working on putting the financing together. And so, once the term sheet gets approved, we're gonna assemble the legal and the finance teams to do that. We're gonna work on the cooperative agreement, the grant agreement, and the purchase agreement with the foundation. Those will all come back for council to approve. Then, the legal and the finance team, they're gonna draft your bond documents, which are relatively voluminous. Eventually, then, you're gonna go obtain initial pricing on the bonds. We're gonna have a general idea of what interest rate we're gonna be looking at, what debt service is gonna be. And we're gonna go to the rating agencies in order to obtain a rating for the bonds, which is ultimately gonna impact the sellability of those bonds, and ultimately, the rate and the costs that we're gonna be paying for those bonds. And then, as that construction team and the design team is wrapping up their work, you're gonna hit that point where then you issue the bonds based on a very good idea of what the project's gonna cost. When we did the Akron Municipal Court project, we literally got final pricing, I think on like Monday, and went out and bid the bonds on Wednesday. I mean, we intentionally waited to bid the bonds until we got final construction pricing, so that we'd be as tight as we possibly could to what the actual construction cost would be. And we can do that here, because we have all that upfront money. It's not like we have to issue bonds in order to pay design, and then pay interest for a year as that design work is being done. We have a little bit of liberty to be able to do that. Same type of process here. I think Boston Heights is doing the same thing with their new justice center as well, in terms of just having that upfront money to pay for design, so that you can kinda basically merge your construction, your design, and your legal and finance teams all at one time, and get it about as exact as you possibly can. One thing I will tell you here, and the asterisk kinda denotes each one of the steps that council will need to approve. Hiring the construction manager, the architect, approving the grant agreements with the foundation. All of those things come back through council. The issuance of the bonds, the agreements in order to buy the bonds, all of that comes through you. And then the only other thing I'll note is the little note here at the bottom, which is, because we have two different buildings, and because we really can't do some parts of this building until some of the current occupants are relocated, there probably is gonna be some sort of phasing, maybe even as dramatic as saying, we're gonna do two different bond issuances, to reduce the amount of interest that we're gonna be paying during the construction period. And that ultimately comes a little bit of a balancing act between your construction manager, and them saying, you know, what makes the most amount of sense and what you can do, and your financial advisor saying, well, if you do two issuances, you're gonna have higher issuance costs, but you're gonna avoid capitalized interest, or lower your capitalized interest, and then determining what makes the most amount of sense. And those are decisions that will be made as we go forward. They're not decisions, quite frankly, you can make now, because you don't have that level of detail with the construction manager and everything like that. And then as we turn this page, the only thing that I will say is, you know, we do have legislation that is pending, that would allow that schematic design to start sooner. Quite frankly, if council says, no, we're not ready to do that, it would line up like you see on this page, and we would do it after we have the term sheet approved by council. But if we do have the, if you all are willing to pass that, we do have the $100,000 from the foundation that will pay for that. And it does get us a two, three-month head start on that design process that otherwise we would be waiting on. So either way, I think, you know, the administration can live with either of those solutions. It just gives us a little bit of a head start using the foundation's money to get there. And then the last page here, as I indicated before, we'll start coming monthly with these type of updates. They're gonna be shorter than they are tonight, because we just had about six months to catch up members of council on. We have begun weekly meetings with members of the judiciary, of the administration. We would, and, you know, we don't wanna get into the, who it is, so, you know, we'll certainly defer to you guys to work that out. But we would like to have a council representative be able to start attending those weekly meetings as well, not only just for updates, but as we start getting into more of the process of selecting, you know, this versus that, it would be helpful to have a council member in that process. And, you know, we're going to be coming back to you guys again with that term sheet. It's going to be the next step, but there's going to be many other approvals in the process along the way. So, with that.
Yeah, just a simple question. Just so everyone knows, not a lot of people may know, may not know, the whole bond, you know, there is different conventional financing. So, you just kind of just give us a quick rundown so everyone understands how bonds are issued.
Sure.
Not issued through the protect, just so everyone has a good understanding.
Yeah, so, as Councilman Easterling pointed out, we would not be taking a conventional loan as you would think of it. We would have two different scenarios here. Either the city would issue bonds or the development finance authority would issue bonds. And we'd kind of, we'll get to the point where we decide which one makes the most amount of sense for the city. And basically, those bonds are issued by an underwriting bank that you have, you have entities that purchase them. Banks can purchase them, insurance companies will purchase them. And just like the federal government, I mean, we're all familiar with savings bonds, we would issue those bonds and it's basically our guarantee that we say we're going to pay those off over time. Those are going to be tax exempt, so they're purchased in the market by people who want to get tax-exempt interest earnings on those bonds. And as we repay them, typically, those are going to be issued for 20, 25, sometimes up to 30 years. The bonds get repaid and those folks get interest and their principal back and the interest earnings are tax exempt. From a functional perspective, kind of the key thing to note is for us, we're going to be looking at, you know, essentially fixed-rate financing. We're going to have a fixed interest rate. Now, if you go in and look at the different bonds that are issued, they're all going to have different interest rates on them, but all blended together, we're going to have an interest rate that we're going to know what it is. We're going to have a number of years that those bonds will be issued for. And so, it's going to work the same way like your house would amortize or your car would amortize in terms of the payment side of things. But there are little weird restrictions. You typically can't refinance bonds within 10 years. It's called calling the bonds. You can't do that. You know, one of the things that we can do with bonds that you oftentimes cannot do with a conventional loan is we can capitalize the interest. So, we can issue the bonds at this point in time. We can do the construction process and interest will accrue and we won't owe any money during that point in time. But the interest then gets tacked on to the debt and you repay it then over that 20, 25 year period of time. And so, it's a process that is different from a conventional loan, but when you, you can simplify it on paper to look the way a conventional loan would look. And as we move forward, it'll look that way as we talk with council.
All right. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Dotson. I appreciate it. So, on page three, what we have accomplished so far, schematic drawings likely need adjustments. That was just what you were talking about, going to the elected officials and you're kind of tweaking their, their areas.
Correct.
And that sounds like it's pretty commonly done in schematic drawings because you're only at 30%.
Yeah, and it's been probably the better part of a year since a lot of those have been put together. So, we just want to make sure with elected officials and department heads, needs haven't changed and we don't need to make any adjustments. We even caught one with, we met with Councilman Easterling earlier. We caught one on the entranceway that probably needs an adjustment. So, just that type of work, not a tremendous amount.
Preliminary pricing of project. How current, I feel like it's hard because like you said, everything's changing daily with our, our government and prices, but how current do we think that would be?
I would tell you, Mike, our last one was over the summer, was it not? Or in the fall? Yeah, yeah. Our most recent one was in the fall and it was within a couple hundred thousand dollars of the other ones we had had so far. We've priced it with four different contractors. So, it, we've not only had the initial pricing from Hassan Stop, we actually priced it with actual contractors. And what I would tell you is in the last six to nine months, construction costs have leveled off significantly from what we saw over the four years prior. Three years ago, I wouldn't have trusted an estimate from a month prior.
Okay, so it has slowed down in that.
That was part of why when we did the Akron Municipal Court, we had to do it the way we did is, you know, we had to drive it right up to as close as we could for that reason.
The page that says project funding sources.
Yep.
So, there's potentially the 750 to 1.1 million. So, let's say we were to get that next year or the year after, 2028, I don't know. Does that like go towards paying down our bonds or does that go to like the foundation not having to give money that year?
No, what we would, so here is what we would do with that. If we were awarded it, it would be available in time to be able to integrate into the project. Part of the reason we don't have it in the budget is because of just the speculative nature right now. But the other part of the reason is it has to be used specifically for police station-related purposes, AV, security, cabling, and other technology. If we got a $1.2 million award, I don't know that we have $1.2 million of expenses in this budget that we could spend it on. So, we would need to figure out what we could move into that bucket. And there may be some extra money left for some bells and whistles for the police department to be able to get at that point. But we would not be able to use that money for debt service. We would not be able to use it to, you know, pay money back to the foundations. So, it would just, it would reduce ultimately how much we would need to issue in debt. But until we actually know we have the award and until we can kind of really figure out what we could pull out and apply to it, we've left it out intentionally because I, even if we got 750, I couldn't sit here and tell you we have 750,000 in replacement costs. There may be a couple hundred thousand in additional security and, and technology pieces that the police department will be able to get.
And would we still be able to go out for grants and funds and stuff over the next several years while this is in process?
Yeah, I, we, so the answer is yes theoretically. But as we sit here right now in terms of where the funding sources line up, the state capital budget won't be in play again until next year. So, in June of 2026 is when they'll pass the capital budget. So, that is probably going to be a little bit later for us. I also don't like, ordinarily, we would not get capital budget money for this project. We've already gotten capital money for the project twice to the tune of 1.5 million. So, I would tell you it's more likely than not, we're not going to get state capital money again for the project. It doesn't mean we're not going to try. I mean, it doesn't take much for us to put together and ask and get it down there. Federal money right now, again, to the extent that it's available, absolutely. Typically, earmark requests would be due in the March-April timeframe. We will definitely go in and put in earmark requests if they are still doing those. But again, there's so much uncertainty there. I, I don't want to say that there's a likelihood that we would get any more state money or any more federal money. I think we probably have rung this one about as dry as we can.
Okay. Sorry, my notes and my questions are all intermingled. Okay. And then, what typically takes you from, you know, at the conceptual point where we are with the other building to being ready to go into schematics?
What takes you there is saying, hey, we're, we pretty much have conceptually done what we need to do, which we've done several months ago, and we're ready for that next step in the process, which as of right now, without those schematic drawings, we can't really effectively bring on a construction manager at this point. You know, we can negotiate the grant agreement, cooperative agreement, and all that with the foundation, but we can't really bring in the legal team and the finance team. I, I wouldn't really do that anyways until we know we get through the term sheet. So, to me, in this particular situation, we're ready to do that. And if we weren't getting the $100,000 from the foundation, I would just tell you money-wise, let's hold off and, and let's get through the foundation process. But because they're giving us that $100,000, as you and I've talked about, that kind of changed our dynamic and we said, well, if we've got $100,000 to pay the $100,000 bill to do schematics, let's get moving on it. Because the sooner we get those schematics done, the sooner we bring in the construction manager, the sooner we bring, we move into the design development. It just moves the whole process up by a couple months. That's why, that's why it's important, but I also am not going to sit here and tell you the world's going to come crashing down if you guys said, we don't want to do the schematic drawings till after we get the term sheet signed with the foundation. It just, it would be disingenuous for me to tell you that we can't make that work. It just means the project is going to be slower than if we can get, get that piece done and get Hassan Stop started sooner.
And from like a planning perspective, everybody has already gone over conceptual and have agreed to the plans we saw in August?
Yeah, I mean, it is, I would tell you that the biggest piece that I think we need to jump on when we get into schematics is probably working with you guys in terms of council and the layout there as well as what we're doing with the Active Adults Center. Because those two pieces, then everything else kind of fills in around that. I mean, we know we want to have the, like the, the finance and permitting counter on the first floor for the public to come in and use that and the, the drive-through. We know we want to have that in the one corner. We believe that it makes sense to have the council chambers most accessible to the front entrance on the first floor. There's a couple different thoughts about whether it makes sense to have the Active Adults Center stuff on the first floor as well, or does it make sense to have it one floor down where it might be a little quieter in the basement level? And then, once you do, once you kind of make those decisions, then you can start filling in everything else around that. But that's where I think we're at with schematic. Fortunately, you know, we're not, in this building, you've got two judges, a clerk of courts, a law director, you know, the police chief. So, you have more people over here that, you know, it's really council, the mayor's office, the finance director that we're going to be in there. So, we just have less people that you have to get around the table and say, what's going where and get them to sign off. But, yeah, I mean, the sooner we can get to that point, I think the better offer we're going to be.
So, all those, what you just mentioned, wouldn't be till schematic? You wouldn't talk about it where we're at right now as far as council or where you're going to put active adults?
I think we've got it laid out from a conceptual perspective, but like often happens, that may very well change as we go into schematic drawing.
Okay. And then, is a project manager the same as the construction manager?
A project manager is more of like a broad, general term. You know, I would tell you going forward on this, if we have a construction manager, you're going to have the architect who also is going to do some construction administration as part of their contract. I would tell you between Mike and myself, this is one we can manage internally, both, you know, me probably more so up through the point of starting construction, Mike going forward with, you know, I continue on after that and Mike obviously is involved before that. But I don't see a need to hire a separate project manager. I mean, the reality is you're already paying for my, you know, I'm not charging anything more to do the project management on this and Mike doesn't get paid anymore to do the project management on it. And we've both done these type of projects before.
I'm done.
Okay. Excuse me. Now, here's a question for you. If we are not able to get $500,000 a year from the foundation, what happens?
So, I'll answer that narrowly and then I'll answer it more broadly. If they came back and said, we can't do 500,000 for 19 years, but we can do 380 for 25 years, something like that can probably still work. We can probably structure the bonds for something like that to work. If they came back and said, you know, we'll give you 250 a year for 20 years, I tell you guys right now, that's not going to work. And I can tell you right now, I don't have another funding source that I can tell you, well, if we go after this, we can plug that gap. So, it is absolutely critical that we either have that level of funding or what I would call an equivalent level of funding from the foundation. I mean, we've even talked, just give us one lump sum payment and increase the amount of sources upfront. And that was not a solution that was going to be workable. But, yeah, I mean, if it's not significantly close to what we have, then we probably aren't going to be able to proceed with the project.
Okay, so, as far as the contract for the schematic drawings and everything, I feel that the $100,000 that we receive from them is a little bit of a good faith effort towards the project, but at the same time, it worries me that we are wanting to vote on that before they even make their decision on the project as a whole just seems like a waste of resources if this project's not going to happen without them. And if we can't make it work, that's $100,000 wasted. You know what I mean?
Yeah, and I agree. And if it was, hey, we want to take $100,000 out of the general fund in order to fund the schematics, I don't believe that the mayor would ask that for the exact reason you just said. But I believe because the foundation offered the money and said, hey, we're willing to put this in, I do think it is a show of good faith. And while there is some risk that we would be, you know, that that money would be wasted or jeopardized, whatever you want to call it, you know, by the time we bring, you know, we get the contract done with Hassan Stop, they start the work, it's not as though they're going to spend $100,000 in the first week. So, if we're going to have a problem with the foundation, I think we're going to know that relatively soon and can tell Hassan Stop, hey, pull back, you know, until we make sure we have it. But, yeah, I mean, that, that's why, again, I'm not going to stand up here and tell you, oh, my God, the project collapses if we can't do the schematic design right now. Because if we didn't have that offer of money from the foundation, we probably would just be dealing with the schedule as you see here on the, on the sheet. I think the elevator came back delay.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, but, yeah, so it's, I mean, it's a judgment call and it ultimately, it's your guys' , you know, it's your call to make as to whether or not it makes sense to proceed and do the schematics now with their money or to hold off for a couple months and wait to do that.
Yeah, like I, like I had said last time, I feel like it would have been more beneficial if we could have had the schematics done to present to them and say, this is what we want to do. Can you help us? You know, but we're just obviously not there, so. Thank you.
Thanks for everything you're doing there and for your email. I hate to cut every page short, but don't you have somewhere?
I do. I keep, I keep looking down here and I've got two little ones that are going to, they're somewhere. Yeah, that are going to be, you're darting out of the car.
Would you be able to come back in the following weeks there because?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
Just real quick.
Keep on going.
I know, hold on, hold on, hold on. So, you said we would know relatively quick. Wouldn't we know in March, on March 20th?
That is the plan, but, you know, I mean, Josh has kind of said, hey, you know, we're trying to get it done on the 20th. You know, I, I think he's got to get it through his board first.
Sure.
But, yeah, I mean, that, that's why I'm saying, you know, it gives us about a two-month head start, but it doesn't give us like a two-year head. start, but it doesn't give us like a two-year head start or something like that. So, yeah, I mean, in that, if we needed to, like, let's say everything went according to plan, the foundation approved it on March 20th, I would assume we would come back to you guys shortly after that. And, I mean, we could do the Haas and Stop as a companion piece at that same time, if you guys wanted to wait. You know, again, it's not like we're waiting until August to get it started.
Good job. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson, for coming in. Usually, when there's an ask for the foundation and they give out money, there's usually some type of fallback if they can't make the yearly payment, like the high school. Is there a plan for that in this case, if they can't make the yearly payment? Or are we just not there yet as far as?
Yeah, we're going to wait to see kind of what they come back with on that. And I've got some ideas legally in terms of what we can do there. We're going to have to be a little tighter with them on that in terms of what we can tolerate in that type of situation. You know, tolerate from a financial perspective. But, yeah, I, I, we drafted it so that they would not have the ability to not make the payment. We would have the ability to go to court and, and have them specifically perform the contract. So we'll see what sort of counter pushback we get to that. But as it's written right now, it would protect against that, that possibility.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Any other questions?
Are we allowed to ask Jeremy a question, or just?
Is Mr. Dodson, all the questions for Mr. Dodson?
By excuse.
Can you excuse?
Can he get down the highway?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. We parked in the parking deck right there, so we can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll leave it open if you, because we do have the police chief, judges, and obviously Jeremy's here, so we can keep the discussion going.
Have fun, boys.
Throw a boo at Jim Russo for me.
Thanks, Jason. I was just wondering if Jeremy could help us, like, on the page that talks about the money that comes from the city?
Mr. Flaker.
What was the question?
Two, three, four, five. I guess on page six, or just in general, could you share, like, how the city has, like, the part the city's going to have to pay?
So is that the project funding sources page, or the?
Bond terms and repayment.
Bond terms and repayment, I guess? Or I guess either page, really?
Okay.
Well, the fund, project funding is money we already have, so then we go out and get bonds. And what does that look like for, for the city in making payments? I'd like to hear from you, because you're very conservative in your spending, Jeremy.
So, I mean, as Jason Dodson alluded to, yeah, we would go out to bonds, first payment. I mean, a lot of it deals with when the issuance occurs, of when that first bond payment will be made. Like you said, probably '26, '27. Interest rate, it's right around that mark right now. Talking with the municipal advisor, could come in lower. But you never know. Interest rates could change. I mean, anything can change between now and when we issue this debt. I mean, construction costs could go up, construction costs could go down, interest rates could go up, go down. I mean, varies. As he alluded to, there could be two bond issuances. I've been work, talking with the municipal advisor some, and he, he's done many, many, many projects. He's been a municipal advisor for Northeast Ohio for many years. So he knows these different projects, he knows these different funding sources or bonds and that. I will say, from my perspective, I would lean more towards, I want the city to issue the bonds themselves versus the DFA. But we have to also make the best choice for the city in that regards.
What, why is that?
Why is that?
Yeah.
There's just a little more associated cost with the DFA. I mean, they're the ones issuing the bond, yes, we're, we're paying them back, but we're essentially leasing it from them. So you're going to have a little more cost associated there.
So it's cheaper for us to do it ourselves?
Yeah, it, it would make sense in, in certain capacities to do this, but from our standpoint, we don't have a lot of debt. The city doesn't have a lot of debt. So we do have the bond capacity to take on this project. Our debt, we're not close to our debt limitation, so we can absorb this, one. And the municipal advisor feels the same way on it. So it's better off if we can issue it ourselves. So we shouldn't have a, a problem there. So, but then the funding sources, I mean, it's the same funding sources that we went over. 200,000 from the water, 200 from sewer, 100 from storm. The court's contributing to 200. The 500,000, 19 years from the foundation. I mean, there is that little gap, as Jason alluded to, but as he said, we will have some savings from my office being in the same building, have some savings from the parks not being down at the, down at the Y, because they, they pay those shared costs of, like, just that grounds in general. So we would be saving that, those monies. So that would be just funnel right back into this. And, I mean, if we do get a little bit lower interest rate, well, that's great for us at that point in time, so. But, I mean, a lot of it depends on, like I said, the market and the bond rating itself, so.
And if, when we do these bonds, will this get us close to our debt limit? Or since we don't have much debt, and then we take this, we're still pretty far away from that?
We'll be fine.
Okay.
There's, there's ways around to have it not hit your debt limit, so we'll, we'll be fine.
I trust you. I just?
We'll be fine.
You said debt limit? I'm like, oh, what's that? And then, I think Jason said we would save 25,000 a year from you being in that building, and 40 to 50,000 a year?
I'd have to see the exact figure.
But that's, I mean, a year, when he said that?
Because I, I split my payment. Because, as you know, my office takes in water bill payments. That's the majority of our traffic in our building, and that's not even coming to my office. But we do handle a lot of the functions. I mean, I have utility billing in my office, so I split the cost between the enterprise funds and the general fund. I'd have to just see that split exactly. What I can do is, I can look at what we paid in rent last year and show you how that was broken up amongst the funds, so you can see what that savings would be.
Thank you.
Yes?
The $100,000 that we got from the foundation for the schematics, we already have the cash, right?
Correct.
And it was specifically for the schematics?
Correct.
Mayor, the schematics are a necessary thing, right?
Correct.
So we would have to pay for them no matter what? Okay. That's all I wanted to know, because it's in front of us, and I'm just wanting it passed so we can start something, because it's something we have to pay for, it's something we were given to my specifically for it, it's something that we have the cash for. I just wanted to make sure I had all that lined up there, that's, that's specific, that we have to have it. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Yes.
So for that $100,000, is there a time limit on that?
They like, they typically like their money spent within a year.
That year? Okay.
I believe a six-month update. As Jason said, you know, it's not going to, you enter into contract, it's not going to get done in a couple of weeks.
Sure.
So get the process started, you get to March 20th, you get through that, you're substantially done. Not done, but you're substantially through the schematics. Keeps the ball rolling.
Secondly, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what is going on here. So this gap, this $47,000 gap, that is a year, right? And that is money that we don't know where it's coming from? Kind of?
I mean, it would have to come from the general fund at that point in time, but, I mean, as I said, you don't know what construction's going to come in at, you don't know what the interest rates are going to come in at. Is there a case, maybe, maybe we do cut out a little bit of something to, to close that gap, to be $0.00? But as I also said, we also have the savings.
You mean, like, cut it out of, like, what we're going to build, or what we're going to do?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we don't do a certain feature on the building to, to cut back on the project cost itself. I mean, I would say we would only lean to that if we were far apart. But I think between the parks, the savings from the parks and the savings from my rent, it's basically plugging that gap at that point in time. Because you got to think, my rent's going to, if, if I don't move, my rent's going to keep going up every single year.
Right.
So that's just going to keep growing exponentially, so.
So let me ask you one more thing. So these two things really depend on when, you know, saving, those savings from the Active Adult Center and the savings from you moving out of where you are, that really begins when you can literally move into that building.
Correct.
Right? You shake your head.
Well, I was under the understanding, if all that goes through, we're getting a dollar a year, a dollar per month, so we're going to have savings on some of these buildings, right, when we sell them to the foundation that we're currently renting? So we're going to have that savings from the, from the rip.
Got you.
I was going to say, yeah, you would have the savings from the wagon.
So you have some savings from the initial deal, if it goes through, but that's also if they give us the 500. Because I would give the building for 150.
Indeed.
Because I think at some point, that's the, the trade-off.
I did forget about that. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The $100,000 from the foundation, that's specifically earmarked for the schematics.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the $100,000 that we already received? Yes, that's for the schematics.
Right.
And only for the schematics, so. It's not included in this file. That's completely separate, so.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? I mean, schematics is going to tell you, or is going to give us a choice to whether we spend $7 a square foot on carpet or 12. So you kind of control your, your overall cost during schematics. You know, your tiles, your wallpaper, your wainscoting, your wood, your stain choices. So schematics is another thumb that you can put on to say, hey, you know, we're not building Taj Mahal, we want a presentable, nice, something that's going to last type building. So you still have more, a lot more cost input in the next step. I mean, I just don't want anyone to, schematic's an ugly word, because it's more of a, it's not really a schematic, it's, it's what you want, you know, it's, it's, it's what you're getting for your money. So if it comes in at 30 million and you want to get down to 29, well, that's where you start looking at, you know, bathroom tiles and carpets and acoustical tiles and to get yourself closer. So you still have spending restraints that you can put on later with the actual final design of the building. Just wanted to let everyone kind of know that you still have a lot more say in what that building's going to cost.
We still don't, I mean, the bottom line is, we need to wait for the foundation. I mean, why would we go spend $100,000 on something that we may not even get funding for? I mean, there's schematic designs sitting in the Wagon Building over in here that we've spent money on, and nothing's ever happened with it. So we've wasted money.
Did we spend our money on those for the old Justice, or did we spend the foundation's money?
There's been studies, I don't know if it's been schematic designs, there's been studies for years. I don't know if there were schematic designs or who paid for them, or I'm not sure.
Because this one, we're not.
My money, or your money, or the foundation money, it's still everybody's money.
That's true. But the schematics have to be done.
I understand that, but like Mr. Dodson said, if we waited three months to make sure, then that's a for-sure thing.
I, I just think if they gave it to us for it, if they're paying for it, why not use it for what it's intended?
Well, it will be used for that, it can't be used for anything else.
Right.
I think it's just the timing of it.
I've, I've spent my piece on it, so I will not debate that.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
I just want clarification. The $1 lease thing was just for the Wagon Building. We're not, right? We're not paying a lease, the $1 lease at the YMCA, so while construction and the project's ongoing, we're not in there, we're still paying the full price.
Yeah, yeah, the parks, it, it doesn't affect parks, it doesn't affect my office. It only affects what we have over at the Wagon Building, which is tons of storage and our servers, and I, well, IT slash servers. So that, that would be the dollar lease, is being able to keep that space, so we can continue to have that stuff over there until the administration building would be to a point to where that stuff would be moved.
Have we talked with the leaseholder for the water department? We signed, like, what, a four-year lease at a time?
So the last time that I renewed that lease, it was a one-year lease with multiple one-year options.
Okay. I think I remember that now that you just said that.
So, yeah, I, in my third year of that, I think I have two more years left, I'd have to double-check on that. So, I mean, more likely, I'm going to have to exercise one more option. After that, I have one option left, I'm pretty sure. Have to just double-check that, but, so, yeah, I, it, it's a one, basically a one-year lease, so it, it's not that I'm, like, tied to that building for another three more years.
We wouldn't have to buy ourselves out, like you're, what I'm getting at. And last thing, Mr. Dodson said you were holding out, and I was actually thinking about this. This is for Chief Morber, I was wondering where that 500,000 went from, what, is that four years ago? Three?
It's been a while.
Four, maybe? Yeah, it was before COVID.
13?
So, we got it like 20, 2020. So I was wondering where it went, I'm glad to see it back on the piece of paper.
Absolutely. We never, it was never handed to anyone.
No, I know, I know, but.
To do this project.
Give, for all the new members, Chief Morber got this grant in 2020, when we first got on, for a new thing, so. That's all I have. Thanks, Director.
Yes.
Well, they start at the first merit building, so that they can move people out of here and get, like, you guys out of your rented buildings?
That would be more up to the construction manager at risk on how they want to develop the phases. I mean, to me, it would make sense that you would work over there first, because they would need room over here to work as well. And how do you make room over here? Get what you can out of here over to there.
That's what I would think.
So I would assume that they would probably start over there. I don't know what their priorities would be, like, hey, would, maybe would it be a case, could we talk to them, like, hey, finance's lease is up here in August, we got to get them out of here really quick? I mean, Mr. Tiedeki can allude to.
Absolutely. That building's empty. Buildings are more efficient when the fat tractor can work inside an empty building, or closer to empty. So the advantage of, and again, you don't think the Haas and Stop schematic design is going to make or break, but because that building is further behind in schematic design, when the foundation does allow that money to be used, that just speeds that building up, where they can hit the ground running three months ahead of time in that building, because it is vacant, they can start potentially even this year, you know, in a very proactive fashion, in good weather, to start on some of that work. And, and again, it just saves a couple of months in the process.
With that, Mr. Tiedeki, how did they decide to do the schematic drawings for this building if this was going to be the second building being worked on, but those drawings were done first?
So, turning the clock back, First Barrett, I don't believe when we first started on that, we even purchased that building at that point in time. So when we first started, some of the purchase of the, you know, Masonic Temple was some of the first thought on how to grow into two buildings, when we started looking at the analysis of this building, the analysis of Masonic Temple, and some of that, a whole other two-hour explanation on why that building didn't make it into the mix, and we are, as that building dropped off, the First Barrett was for sale with the price coming down, we looked at comparatively, how does, how do you convert Masonic Temple? how does, how do you convert Masonic Temple to work versus buying another building that has much more space that at the end of a lower cost ends up with twice as good of a building usable for City Hall. So this was already well through those generations before we purchased that. Once we purchased that, and you know that the building has this much space for this much use, we didn't put a lot more energy into the schematic design. We took the pause once we knew the programming fitted to the building.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna, we'll take a three-minute break. Either that, we'll be here all night. It's fine.
What was he saying?
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started.
Yes. When he was talking about the interest on the bonds upfront, that last thing with Jason Dodson, I didn't quite understand. He was talking about interest, they don't have to pay.
Get out the gavel, Justin.
All right. I was gonna try to go, then I was like, we gotta, a bunch of appointments and stuff. All right, I'm gonna ask that cell phones are turned off or on silent, members of Shire Council, microphones are turned on. Yeah, I, I, I'm still gonna stick to what I said. All right, we're back to our regular, regular scheduled show. Again, this is a committee of the whole meeting today, but before, we're gonna kick it off with our, or the next step is gonna be a committee meeting, so we're gonna start with street sidewalk and lighting with Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I call, I kinda forgot what to do.
I thought we threw wrench in everything.
So many things to think about. Street sidewalk and lighting committee to order, it is Monday, February 3rd, at 7:16 PM. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Monti Harris, Chuck Heaslering, and Justin Greer, and guests noted on my sheet. We don't have anything, nothing le- pending, nothing requested. Is there any miscellaneous discussion from anyone? Oh, Lord, let's go with Monti.
Um, I was just talking to Mr. Shreve. Yes, the potholes are popping left and right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, our street guys are out there filling them as best they can. Also, I asked that if someone is complaining about a pothole, either get on the city website and fill out a work ticket or call your councilperson and let them do it. It doesn't get fixed unless someone knows about it. And someone finally at like 10 o'clock last night texted me and said, hey, can Hudson Run get fixed? There's a, a large hole. So at 30 this morning, I put a work ticket in. By 10:30, 11 o'clock, it was fixed. And also be very cautious when you're going around those guys. I was just talking to Mr. Shreve, one of the vehicles were, was hit today by a lady. So give those guys plenty of room to do their job and fill those holes in that we all hate.
I do want a second on that pothole, pothole portal. I love it. You can see it on the side if it has been acknowledged, use it. It's great, love it. So happy about that.
This might be for Mr. Shreve. Areas like where Monti just talked on Hudson Run, and I know state between like Worcester and the freeway is pretty messed up right now. Are those, like on those main roads, already identified by the street department since they're main roads, or they still need tickets, or what are your thoughts?
So primarily, I mean, it's, it's complaint-driven. We do know that there are areas that need addressed. What they'll do is like, if, if we can get two crews out, they may send a crew to address the, the known areas and a, a crew to address the complaints.
Okay.
If we can get two crews out. But again, that's also kind of on the amount of guys, um, the, you know, and making sure that we can get materials. I also was just sharing with Monti that, uh, we just found out today that Rupp's is making hot-mix asphalt. So that's, that's a cost savings to the city because it's about a half, half the price as coal patch, and it typically tends to stay a little bit longer. The other thing is, is with the temperatures, when it's 50 degrees one day and 29 degrees the next, um, that, I mean, that freeze thaw causes the roads to just fall apart even faster. So, um, the guys are definitely going to be playing catch-up for the next couple of weeks trying to combat the weather and the road condition, so.
The roads in my sinuses total havoc with this temperature change. Thank you. That was all I had. Thank you.
Uh, with nothing else, may I have the motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:19.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Next up is environmental health and social services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, President. Environmental health and social services meeting this evening in council chambers, this is February 3rd, 2025, at 18, 19:22 hours. All members of my committee are present, with myself as chair, Jordan Griffin, Taylor Thompson, Justin Greer, all of the members of council are present, including guests as noted on my sheet. We have no request for legislation, no appointments, no pending legislation. As far as miscellaneous discussion, everyone received a Summit County public health report to the district advisory board. There's, um, some interesting stuff to read in here. They recently completed a 4,000-square-foot storage garage designated for their emergency preparedness garage program, which is nice to know. Some more budget information, different locations and post, uh, illnesses and such, so if you get a chance, take a glance over it. And with that, is there anything from my committee or the body, anything from the gallery? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, and we are adjourned at 19:22.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Next up is planning and annexation and codes, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, annexation and codes, Monday, February 3rd, 2025, 7:22 PM in council chambers. The committee is present, which consists of councilors Harris, Thompson, President Greer, myself as chair, all others noted. On the agenda, there is not a request for legislation. However, did everybody receive the request from our planning director, Stacy Carr? Did everyone see that?
Stacy's here.
She's not able to make it tonight.
She is not. Okay. Mr. Mayor, do you have any input on what this 500,000 EPA assessment Brownfield grant is to be used?
Uh, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but that was, as you mentioned, a grant that we applied for through the EPA. We've been pretty successful so far in acquiring grants and cleaning up Brownfields throughout the city. So I believe it's page one of the assessment of Brownfields through town. So it's kind of an open grant, I forget the period of time we have to use it, it's usually three to four years.
This, the request letter also says that the city received bids from three consulting firms, and it was unanimous that T&amp;M Associates was the most qualified to carry out this grant. Is that to your knowledge there?
Yes, I was not involved in the bidding process with the opening up of the bid, so I'm not sure who all the companies were who bid on it. The T&amp;M's work for the city in the past has done a great job.
Thank you, and I also have correspondence from Law Director Miller that said that she approved a 10-day rule suspension. If the committee wishes, I will entertain a motion to suspend that and put that on right now. If there's a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Being that the 10-day rule is suspended, I'll entertain a motion to call for this.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have requests from Mayor Judge requesting the appointment of Terry Avant to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term of six years, beginning immediately and ending December 31st, 2030. Is there any discussion on this appointment ask?
Do we have any other applications?
Mr. Mayor?
No, I don't believe so.
No other applications for zoning appeals? Thank you. No other questions? Do I have a motion to call for this appointment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I will second. And those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one. Let's move to the floor. We have nothing else? Is there any miscellaneous discussion from the committee for planning? From the body? From the gallery? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:26.
Thank you, Ms. Heideck. Last but not least, finance personnel, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring the finance and personnel committee to order. It is Monday, February 3rd, 2025, 7:26 PM here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Heideck, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Greer. All other council members are also present, as well as guests as noted on my sheet. We have a few requests for legislation this evening. The first being a letter from Lisa Colish-Miller requesting legislation to enter into a one-year contract with the Legal Defender's Office of Summit County to provide legal representation to contingent persons in the amount of $230 per case, emergency warning and one reading as requested. Are there any questions or remarks about this request? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a letter from Todd Shreve, Director of Public Service, requesting legislation authorizing payment to Everbridge Incorporated for the annual NICSIL contract in the amount of $5,582.94, emergency warning is requested. It's pretty straightforward, but does anybody have any questions on that one? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call please?
I'll move.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we have a request for several appointments to the Charter Review Board for 2025. We've got Julie Miller, Tom Harnan, Dana Angeloff, Carol Frye, Dallas Moore, Eddie Lawson, and Charlie Reese. Can we break this down like one by one, or?
Yes, please do. I would do a group separately on them.
Yeah, that's not, that's not.
It's not a one or all type thing.
So, in looking at the, uh, goals for, you know, for the Charter Review Commission here, uh, it's my understanding that there can be no more than four of the same political party, is that correct?
Correct.
I don't know all of these, um, residents personally, but I do only recognize one Republican, and I could be wrong there. Mr. Heideck?
Thank you, Chair. I did look earlier, according to the Board of Elections, the minimum by registration has been hit.
What? Can you break that down?
There were four Democrats, a non, and, is it two nons? There's two, two listed Republicans.
So there's two Republicans, three Democrats, and one independent or not.
What is it? I'm sorry, can you say it one more?
I'm sorry, can you say it one more time?
Two, two Republicans, one independent, um, and three Democrats.
That's only six.
There's four, there were four Democrats.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, it was, it hit the maximum for that.
I counted like five Democrats.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what, what actually qualifies for that? Because I feel there's a difference between somebody who is showing up as a registered Republican because they polled in our ballot in spring of last year, but every other time they vote Democrat. Just out of curiosity, so what?
Well, that's a legal question for Mrs. Miller, because the charter outlines it, and she's not here.
See, look.
Um, that's a, that's a legal interpretation needed for that. Um, the Board of Elections associates a, a party being of two consecutive or two pass votes, but that's not our charter, right?
Yeah, that's the Board of Elections.
Right, that's how they determine that.
That's just what confused me a little bit. Um, so, I just wanna, you know, please go by the rules. And if I'm not mistaken, we did receive more, um...
Applicants.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we did receive more applicants than this, is that correct?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's a, at the last moment, there was quite a few, uh, applications that came through. So, you know, trying to put together the best slate that we could, um, and the letter was drafted, and some came through afterwards after I already submitted it.
Okay.
But, you know, based on the charter, everyone that is on that list needs the qualifications of how they're registered.
Sure.
I don't, I didn't look at how they voted a year ago, two years ago.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's accurate, because as you know, as an elected official, when you are trying to get signatures for your petition, if somebody pulled in our ballot, you would not be able to, you know what I mean? So, I just wanna make sure that it's...
Just like Councilman Heideck, I checked the Board of Elections, and that had one registered last year, uh, for how they were registered.
Are you able to share who, like the two Republicans, one independent and four Democrats are?
I can. That's what I was raising my hand for.
Mr. Mayor.
If, thank you, Chair. If you go in order from first to last, it is R, R, D, D, non, D, D.
Oh, man, I messed up. That's not accurate, but okay, thank you.
That's according to the Board of Elections.
Mm-hmm, okay. But I think it goes to Mrs. Thompson's point. If you just voted one way, one time in your life, I don't think that qualifies you.
Again, like President Greer said, it's the interpretation of our charter.
Gotcha.
So, I don't, I don't know.
That's a legal question.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure before we, you know...
So now, what do we do?
Well, I would have liked to have seen the other applicants, to be honest with you.
I thought the new ones, because it was a question, but I just forwarded them to who asked the question.
Yeah.
And I forwarded them to the rest of the council.
So you've got...
Maybe it was late.
Today.
When was that?
Yeah.
This afternoon.
Oh.
I'm coming here, so, I apologize, I didn't see that, but I had a feeling. Um...
That was late.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes.
Um, this question's for the mayor. When do we, the appointments need to be made? What, the, I know it's out, I just tried, gonna pull it up, but...
Yeah, I would have the charter in front of me.
End of February.
So it's March 1st?
They have to be appointed by the end of February by the charter.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have some...
We have time.
Yeah, we have time to, I would like to just get further clarification, just to double check. And I also would like to see the other applicants. I, I did not get those, um, like I said, I came straight here from work, so, um, I know that this is who you chose, Mayor, but I just, just out of curiosity. So, um, I'm just gonna hold this, and then we'll talk about it next week, if that's okay.
Yeah, I got it.
I didn't know if we were gonna talk through who we had already.
Last day of February, so.
No.
I mean, it's up to her, I don't care.
Thank you, Chair. Being that they have to be seated by the end of February.
To talk to them next week?
I, my suggestion, and it's your committee, would be to hold individual votes tonight to give, if anybody doesn't pass, the mayor would need time to send different ones for the last legislative meeting to be able to make an appointment. If nobody, if not all seven pass tonight, he would have to send a request letter to fill the remaining slots to be able to be a vote in the last legislative meeting of the month, to make sure that they're appointed by the end of February for the charter.
And we can't, yeah.
Mayor, go ahead.
And just for clarification, you know, that council's request was to have newer people on boards and commissions, which we've done. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone's gonna be new, because it just, you don't get all those applications. We got a lot of applications at the end, some of them are previous city employees, um, who would be new to the Review Committee, the Charter Review Committee. Uh, Mr. Hardin is on there, uh, you do need someone with some historic knowledge, so the committee, committee's not spinning their wheels on what was talked about five years ago and didn't pass. You want to be useful, you want to go forward and be productive. So I think it's a good mix of people who are invested in the community, with some people who are new to the community, who wanna get invested in the community, with some historic knowledge as well. So, just wanted to give that, kind of perspective.
Mr. Chair, you're part of this, uh, committee, so I'd like your input as far as, uh, what Mr. Heideck said.
If there's a legal question, I won't put my name on a name. That makes sense? That's like voting on something you don't fully understand.
Yeah, and Mr. Griffin, are you, okay, if we talk about this next week?
As long as we can, can we get it down before...
Can we still vote on it next week if we put it to the floor during my committee?
You would have to, if you don't call it out today, we would have to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
You'd have to suspend not called for committee of the whole.
Yeah.
And, uh, the agenda, because I can't put it on, it's not called out.
Okay.
But you could do it the following week, right? The following council of the whole.
You could...
Your drop dead date be the second legislative committee, the let, second legislative, hold on. And then...
Be on the 20, 24th.
Yeah, it'll be on the 24th.
Yeah.
But if you still can't come to an agreement, or you're still arguing, that is the drop dead date.
Yeah.
We will have to schedule a special legislative meeting for other arguments.
Which is why I suggested...
Oh, I understand why.
Yeah, I get it.
I have a question. Any extra names just be added to the next meeting? That way, it's, it's all there. Can you, can you vote in alternates? If so-and-so doesn't pass, I mean, here's, here's the next choice. I mean, can you do that as a pecking order? That way, there, there's no other?
No.
Great question, but, uh, the mayor's the one who requested that we appoint these individuals.
That would be, I guess, a legal question, because that would go against the charter?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, at the end of the day, we can't even, we're, we're not appointing, we're just confirming.
Yeah.
So, um, we can't say, we can't, we can't put anybody in there. We're just confirming.
I'm just waiting.
Um, okay, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with voting, um, on a few of these, however, uh, at a quick look on my handy app myself, I do know that, uh, Mr. Hardin, um, I, I questioned his, uh, political status, his party status. That was the one, and, um, I, when I looked up Mr. Reese as well, it wasn't pulling up for me at all, so...
On the Board of Elections?
Mm-hmm.
Larry Reese.
Larry, yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Um, and then Mr. Moore, I also had listed as a D, so...
I swear, he was listed as a non, but I may have been mistaken there.
It might have been my mistake as well, so, I think those three...
I haven't pulled up right now. He's a nonpartisan.
Is he? Okay.
You wanna look up Larry?
I can.
He's a D.
Yeah, I couldn't find him.
He's a Democrat. Registered.
Taylor, can I ask the mayor a question?
Yeah.
Mayor, um, we're, two questions. You mentioned that at the last minute, some extra applications came in, and you had already drafted the letter of who you were gonna recommend. Did any of the later applications coming in make you think, oh, I would have put them instead of?
Not really, no, I mean...
You would have stuck with your first?
I think, based on some of those applications, council would still be questioning them. Because there's, there're people who are vested in one way or the other, and they already...
Yeah. Um, I liked what you had to say about Mr. Hardin and the historical knowledge. Would you be willing to use him in one of your Democrat seats?
He's not an extra Democrat for the Board of Elections. Right. I mean, there's council members here who voted one way several years ago, and voted different ways over the last year.
Sure, okay.
So, I mean, you, I, I would assume you go by the way that, who's, how you register.
I got you. Okay.
And they didn't change their registration, as far as I know, the last one.
Okay, no, I understand.
So I can't change Mr. Hardin's...
Political party? Okay.
Mr. Harris.
Chair, wasn't there a question about some legal standing here that Mr. Greer brought up? About not being comfortable until that matter is addressed by the law director?
Right, and that's why it's, which, believe me, Mr. Hardin, I've worked with him, I have nothing against the man whatsoever, and I think he does great things for the community. I'm just worried that with, that it doesn't check out the way that, uh...
But I think we, the legal matter should be addressed first before we do anything else.
Yeah.
And that doesn't, I'm not talking about any of the names specifically, but I'm just saying.
Sure.
Why do not, why do we not wait for the law director to make a legal decision and let us know then?
Yeah.
So here's what I would do. We can run this tonight, and we can look through these. Um, this is just my suggestion. I just looked up Mr. Hardin, he is a registered Republican with the Summit County Board of Elections. 9:04, the address, that's him. Yeah. We could go next week, suspend for not called for at the committee of the whole. These are just appointments, but they do need to come out.
To vote on anything on a legislative, it has to be called out during committee of the whole.
Correct, I know that.
You know what? Let's call them out, because we're not voting on it until next week anyways. Are you okay with that, Mr. Harris?
If you do it individually, yes.
I do want clarification, yes, individually, of course. I do wanna get the clarification from Mrs. Miller, but we're not voting on it tonight anyways. So, um, I would like to call it out, that way we don't have to worry about that, but, uh, I just wanted to double-check that, that's all. And like I said, if Mr. Hardin is, um, you know, Republican, right, I just wanna make sure that everything is the way that, you know, it's supposed to be. Um, just wanted to check that rule with, uh, Lisa. So, okay. If there's nothing else for this, uh, I guess we go one by one in this case, or should we call for it as a panel, and we vote on it one by one?
No, one, one by one.
Okay.
That's the last Justice Committee.
We don't have a say right now. We don't get to.
No, it's okay, I'll just put it in my notes here. Um, okay, uh, do I have a motion to call for the appointment of Julie Miller?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to call for the appointment of Mr. Tom Hardin?
I'll move.
In a second?
I'll make it.
You're on the committee?
Oh, not on the committee. It's quiet.
It's gotta be somewhere. A short...
No second? We'll hold Mr. Hardin until our, uh, questions get answered. Next up, a, uh, motion to appoint, uh, Mrs. Nina Angeloff?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to appoint Mrs. Carol Frye?
Still move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor?
Aye, fine.
A motion to appoint Dallas Moore?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Mr. Eddie Lawson?
Still move.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least, a motion to appoint Mr. Charlie Reese.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so... Yep, I have just the one. All right, uh, moving on, we do have one piece of pending legislation, even though it's not here on the agenda, um, which I do wanna talk about this evening, is Ordinance 2-2025, presented by Mrs. Gierhardt and myself, titled Enter into Contract, Hasn't Stop Architects. The ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate enter into contract with Hasn't Stop Architects for architectural services for schematic design for City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barbenin, and the cost not to exceed $104,200, and declaring an emergency. Next week would be the third reading, however, based on conversations, uh, had in the past few weeks and this evening, I think it might be best to go ahead and pull this rather than a vote, and it possibly fail, um, because this is something that needs to happen. And I think, uh, just based on what I've heard, a lot of the concern is that we want to make sure that we have the funds in place before the designs. And it's not putting us three months behind, it's six weeks. And, um, I think if we have the design made up, um, we're kinda putting the cart before the horse, you know? So, uh, that's my opinion, would love to, I know how you feel, but if you wanna...
I do, I do believe that it might not look good to the Board of the Foundation if they were to award us $100,000 for schematics and then have a meeting March 20th, and we haven't started. They might look at us, there are some directors that might look at us and say, what's your holdup here? We gave it to you, and you're not even moving forward with it.
To which I would tell them, well, we don't know if we're gonna have funding for the project, so we don't wanna waste the money.
Here's my second concern. The meeting's March 20th. Things happen in life. What if there's not a quorum? Now they have to wait another, how many times? How many months before their meeting after that? I just don't think that, I think if they gave it to us to use for a specific purpose, if we're not going to use it for that purpose immediately, then hand it back. My worry is that they could use us not using it against us in any grant request that we're holding things up on our end. And again, if anybody was at the meeting where they tabled the one discussion, there were people that were remote, that I believe, being remote, they don't have the ability to vote?
No, they can vote.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. So, once again, there's always a quorum issue.
Yeah.
What was it, a couple of weeks ago, this council had five of us here? If one more person wasn't able to make it, the whole meeting was shot.
I get it. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm honestly on the fence about this, because if we could have the designs before we could go to them to ask for the money and say, look at what we wanna do, that's one thing. But now, because it is so close, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, and my reason for wanting to pull it rather than letting it go to a vote next week, I don't think it's gonna... don't think it's going to pass. It's got emergency wording on it, there's hesitations, and I just think it'd be best to wait.
We always have, one of the reasons that we had this huge discussion in here was because we couldn't see a clear picture.
Sure.
So how do we expect the Barbton Community Foundation to approve a really big ask over a long time without a clearer picture? Or that we are working on giving them a clearer picture? Obviously, by March 20th, it's not going to be done, right? But, you know, we're always saying, it's not wrapped up in a bow, I'm sorry to use your words, but, you know, we're always saying, I, I don't see the clear picture, I don't see the clear picture. We're expecting somebody to give us a lot of money without putting our money where our mouth is, using a gift that was given to us that we didn't ask for. I mean, let's remind ourselves that they called us up and said, you want this money? I found it, I found some money for you. You know, so I guess they wouldn't have asked us that, do you want to take this money? Without knowing they're probably going to give us the big ask. It's not a secret.
Yeah.
What we were going to ask them in the first place. And everybody knows that's what we're going to ask for. So it's not going to be a surprise. Do you know what I'm saying?
I see that.
So it's, is it a little bit of a leap of faith? Sure. But I think we're splitting hairs here, guys. I really think we're splitting hairs here. That's my opinion, so.
Ms. Gerhardt?
I think part of the clearer picture you talked about was on Friday when they got the term sheet over and the updated funding and the ask that we approved in November. Like, the foundation's concerned about the money. They're not concerned if the bathroom has the toilet paper on the left or the right. Like, so that's why I think with preliminary, they get the gist, and then this was what they were waiting for Friday. And it, it just got there, so.
Sure.
I'm still on, Taylor, I'm, Mrs. Thompson, I'm sorry, um, just, I want to see that the money's been allocated and approved, since we cannot do this if we don't have at least, what was it, 350? Like, there was a, an amount that Mr. Flaker shared with us that was like a threshold we at least need to have. So, that's, that's just me. I play it safe.
Um, logistic follow-up. I don't think that you can just pull a piece of legislation after it's been read. I'll follow up with the rules on that. And we'll go from there. We've had two precedents in the past, as we've had to strike it down in recent minutes.
Yeah, I know it doesn't happen often.
So, I'll follow up with you, I'll let you know. Obviously, way before, as soon as possible, I'll let you know.
Sure.
Wait, you can plan.
Is there any other remarks for?
I'll kind of weigh in a little bit.
Yes.
There's, there's two different ways you can look at this. I'm, I'm more on the fence probably than you, because I've actually had private conversations with most of the audience.
Sure.
If we get the drawings and it goes through all the little avenues, God forbid, you actually get hard numbers. Because right now, everyone sitting here, we're, we're based on hypotheticals without the actual working drawings, which they're, they're calling schematics, but working drawings. You don't know your cost. I mean, you're, you're guessing your finishes, you're, you're guessing everything. And at the end of the day, if it comes in out of budget, way out of budget, to where we can't reel it in, next year, the year after, year after that, we still have the drawings. If this is the next, we're not going to do it for three years. I say, take the gift, get the drawings, you have them, even if it doesn't work out. And I'm more on the fence probably than anybody here, just because I want to make sure the city's getting apples for apples, you know, I don't want a big mortgage. But I think we're kind of in a, a good situation, where we're going to get free drawings, when I say free, it's a gift. And we're going to get all the information we need, price-wise, down to the penny afterwards. And we, we won't get any of that without them, and that's my two cents.
I appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Hager, did you have your hand up as well earlier, of Mr. Harden?
I feel the same way. We got to have the schematics. You got to, you got to know what you're going to do when you do something, you know? When you, when you put something in, build a house or whatever, you got to have a drawing, you got to, you got to know how much you need. If you come to me and say, I want to borrow some money, I got to have, you got to have a drawing, you got to have something to take somewhere to somebody, look at it instead of waiting. How you going to get the money if you don't know what you're going to do? That's my take. I would take the, I would, the money's there, we don't have to go look for it. We have $100,000. Take the money, get the schematics done, the drawings, whatever you want to call it, and go from there and be done with it. And put it, put it on their, on their back. They gave us that, do that, give it to them. This is what we want.
For point of clarity, has anybody said that they don't want the schematic drawings done? Or has it just been an ask that we wait until March for them? Because I don't want to not have schematic drawings. I just wondered if you'd been hearing that?
That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make one comment. There's no money here that's free. Every, it's money from taxpayers, it's money from you guys. It's from you, Mr. Shorter.
Yeah, somebody's going to pay.
Right.
I mean, it's from the foundation.
I mean, if, if it wasn't for the citizens, we wouldn't have a foundation. Well, like I said, if it wasn't for the citizens of the city, we would not have a foundation.
Well, we wouldn't have the city, would we? So, if you were to have this question, it wouldn't even be asked. We wouldn't be here.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, of course. I was, I was waiting.
Okay, so, we already have schematics for the Justice Center, right?
This building?
Yes.
Yes.
So, was anybody upset when we got that? We didn't know, we're way farther away than, at that time, to say what we were going to even ask for. I mean, that was a huge discussion and took a long time to figure out. You know, you just said not an hour ago, you wish you would have had those first.
Yes.
So, I'm confused on what you want. Like, do you want them or not? Or did you wish you had them or not?
I do want them.
Do you know what I mean?
I just don't want funds to be...
Do you recall when you three approved the drawings for this building? Because it would have been before us, right?
Yeah.
First mayor building wasn't even in the conversation at that point, right?
Right, he, he said that earlier today. But we've spent this money, we've, what was it, 120, I think, at that time, right? To get those schematics done for the Justice Center. We spent more money on schematics, I don't, was that a gift from the foundation? Where did that money come from? Okay, so we, we, that came out of our general fund to get that even farther away than what we were even going to ask for. So, that's a, a thing to think about. You know, Judge, Mayor Judge keeps saying we're closer than ever, than we have ever been, and we are down to like inches on this, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand where you all are coming from.
I want it.
We don't know if they're going to say, yes, we're going to give you 500, or we're going to give you $3. I, you know, we don't know that.
But you know what? I do appreciate, to Mr. Easterling's comment, you know, if it doesn't work out, we still have...
We have, we still have the drawings and I, I have been thinking that, the same thing too, like, what's the difference? We have them.
We don't even have to look into the same builder's second trip. You know what I mean? We're, we're going to own the proprietary rights of the drawings with the architects. We can send them whoever we want. We don't have to use the three or four that they've chosen this time if it doesn't go through.
Sure.
We can send it back out for rebid to five, 12 different. So, once we have them, I mean, we, we've got, we've got.
Mr. Hyden?
Thank you, Chair. There's a comment on the online feed. Mr. Bernie Erwin. Contractors may not be able to purchase building products with the current federal tariffs that may pass the cost of availability, or something blocking it, may change. That was a public comment there.
Right. I think that's in the back of all of my minds, are, all of our minds, really.
Yeah.
We do not have a crystal ball to know what's going on, even tomorrow with this. Uh, I can't live as though the sky is falling, but it's something I'm concerned about. So the sooner we do this, the better.
Uh, Mayor, do you?
Oh, okay. I'm on the fence, as are all of you, um, but one thing that keeps going through my mind is when we looked, all of us that met, um, and looked over the first set of drawings that they gave us, um, and then we saw like areas where, um, floor space could have been used for something else, and it could have been a coffee bar or whatever, and it wasn't because it wasn't needed, and it was turned into storage space. And with schematic drawings, if you're pinpointing, and we can go through and get even more detail, I mean, I know we're sending financial information over to the foundation, and obviously, that's very good. But I think too, if we can send drawings along with that financial information, and they can say, they can look at it and say, wow, they have really used every single inch of this space to its best ability. They're not use, putting in stuff that's not needed. They're not putting in coffee bars, they're not putting in, you know, fancy fog-free mirrors in the restrooms, you know? If they can see all of those little minute things that all add up to, on our side, being very efficient with our spending, that's something that they can't see through just the financial papers. So, I mean, I, I agree with all of you, I am on the fence, because whether, you know, we wait a few months, you know, it's not going to make that great a difference, and, you know, but at the same time, like Mr. Easterling said, once we have those drawings done, they're ours forever. So, but I think a lot of times for people visually seeing something helps a lot to envision what you're going for.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is that because we're doing this now, and they're meeting, what was it, March 20th, those drawings are not going to be done for us to present to them, to say, this is what we want to do, this is why we need this much money. They have an idea, obviously.
Yeah.
You guys have been working on this for years, but it, they're not going to be done. And that's, that's why I have like part of my hesitation there.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, did you have something?
I think Mr. Harris has a question.
No, she answered it when she was talking about the schematic drawings not being done from Mar, till March 20th, I mean...
So, my only comment is, you know, entering the contract legislation, obviously, is what we're talking about. An approval by council gives the administration the authority to sign the contract. Doesn't force me to sign the contract. So, you know, if, if it's approved, you know, give my word, I won't sign it until a later date. The difference being that if it's passed in March on the 20th, uh, at the foundation, we're ready to go. Sign the contract and ready to go versus waiting some more time, even if it's a few days, get Hasn't Stop, ready to go. The other thing is if it's approved by city council, the next step is board of control. And, you know, Ms. Miller isn't here, but Mr. Flaker's here, and it's us three that make up board of control. And if it's approved by council, we can hold it at VOC, so we can't sign it until it's passed by VOC. So there's a few other steps. If approved by city council, then we can hold this up, but still be ready to go.
Yeah, and I believe, and, I don't know if it's just because it's been a long day, or we don't do this very often, but we can at least amend this, correct?
Yeah.
Instead of pulling it all together, because like I said, my fear was, you know, it has emergency wording, and I, I don't think as is that it would pass.
You can amend it to say like pending approval of...
Yes, that's what I'm thinking. If we can add that, um, pending approval for, you know, from the...
Foundation.
Foundation, I think that, uh, would be a good compromise for everybody.
With pending approval, do you want the emergency wording to stay? Or do you want that to leave that's left?
We'd have to...
We can talk about it.
Yeah.
Can I make sure I understand what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
So we would vote on it, and if the foundation didn't award us the 500,000, then it would not be a thing? I don't under...
Correct.
How was that a compromise?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, just making sure I'm understanding that. And that is, is that the full, full amount?
Well, see, that's what I was going to say.
I was going to ask, if that's the case, why don't we just write them a check and hand it back? I mean, if we, I'm dead serious, if we're not going, if we're going to put conditions on that we may not use it, just give them the damn money back.
Well, we'll have to if we don't, if we don't figure it out in a year.
I mean, that 100,000, according to the mayor said, he said up to a year, right? For the 100,000 to be spent?
Per their rules, yeah.
Yeah. So everybody's rushing here.
Yeah, because I want the hell out of this building so the police can spread out.
We, we know.
I think our police...
I, I think I know, I, I spent 25-plus years downstairs, I know. And do I care about a city building? Not as much as I care about a Justice Center, trust me, because I've lived it.
Yeah.
I know how unsecure, unsafe, and what a crap hole it is in the basement.
Yeah.
Okay?
And we don't know anything about it until we're all out.
But, let's not rush, let's make sure the plan's in place. I mean, too often, things are just done, as I, I've said in the past, it's willy-nilly. Let's get a plan, stick to it, and go.
Are there any other remarks from anybody? Yeah, Mr. Best.
If this doesn't go through, and the contract doesn't get awarded, you need to make a new contract. Might cost you $150,000. Because inflation is, is going up every day, and you know, as well as I did contractor store every day. So it might go from 100 to 150,000. Then you spend 150,000 of taxpayers' money that might not have been lost.
And the foundation may not give us the grant either.
Like I say, you own the print, you buy it.
Yeah.
You own it, you own it forever.
Bird in the hand, we have a bird in the hand. All we need to do is this, you know?
Well, if there's, um, nothing else, I guess I'll open it up for miscellaneous. I will, I will say, I do appreciate the discussion, and, you know, I've been very upfront with you guys, I am, I am a little bit on the fence about this, because I do feel that the foundation's money is the citizens' money, and I just would hate to see it, in a way, go to waste, but also, Mr. Easterling made a good point, I mean, if it doesn't work out for them, who says it won't work out five years down the road with somebody else? You know, I don't know. So, that's all. But, any, any miscellaneous for me? Mr. Hyden?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick one.
Great.
Budget.
Where's the debt?
So, I was going to give it up. Um, so, the budget, as I mentioned in my update to council, lost a couple of days with the freeze from the federal government, as we were looking to see how that might affect us, um, and then, obviously, that was rescinded, um, but during that time, I had to pull away from the budget, and, you know, we're talking to AMHA and Metro and, and everyone else who has federal funding that works with the city, plus our own projects, cops grants, assistance to firefighters, dog lines, all that. Um, and then, I had to meet with two other department heads, uh, who were not in last week, parts of the week, did meet with them today, posed some questions to Jeremy, just Mr. Flaker, just before city council, and I want to shore up some things, get it in his hands tomorrow, and then he's got to, you know, wave his wand over it and then get to city council, so.
Thank you.
Here is one more remark.
Okay.
Bernie Erwin?
Okay.
Complete the full drawings, enough is enough.
Thanks, Bernie. Appreciate your comment. Ms. Gerhardt?
Do you think the waving of the wand would have it to us next week? Or do you think we'd at least want to start with departments that you, you already have confirmed? We seem to ask a lot of questions.
No, no.
And I don't, I don't want to be pushed down to the wire.
No, and I drafted a letter... No, and I drafted a letter today, just don't have a date on it. Mr. Flaker, obviously, is very good. I'm gonna speak for him. He's very good. He should have that done. He knows it's coming. The budget is, you know, kind of second nature to us. It's just kind of making sure that if you want a project done, how do you get it done? Right? So, how do you pay for it? The new software system, as I've told Mr. Flaker, I do not like. It's not, in my opinion, easy to navigate in comparison to what I've done the previous twelve years. But he should have that done, but I'll let him speak a little more if he wants. So, not to put him on the spot, but-
Do you wish that we hadn't approved his ask for the software last year?
No, I'm not gonna say that.
Okay.
So, you'll have it to us tomorrow at five, right?
I don't know about tomorrow by five. But, I mean, if we want this to go through readings, the budget needs to be in your hand by this Friday. So, it will be in your hands this week. If, if, going through the training, we have all the pages done up. It's just putting in the final numbers. And then, once those final numbers are put in, I will go through, push it through as an approved status. I will then block the budget so no one can make changes and mess with my numbers anymore. And I should be able to just hit a button and export. In theory, that's what I should be able to do. I should be able to hit export media, and you guys will have it in your email. We'll see if that truly happens. So, it, it's my first year on the software itself, so there is learning curves. I mean, I will admit to the mayor, there are learning curves to it. I don't know if it's as bad as he's making it sound. I mean, one thing that I will do, I, I will get with all the department heads, I will talk with the department heads, see what they like, see what they'd like to see approved, because I can make changes on how it was structured versus how it was, how it's been. I can make changes like that to the system. And if I have to make changes to make it easier on the department heads, I will. But as of waving the magic wand, yes, you, as long as I get all the final stuff from the mayor tomorrow, I'm hoping that by Wednesday or Thursday, it'll happen to you guys.
Okay.
It shouldn't take me long. In theory, like I said, we had everything already done up. I was double-checking, making sure I had everything included in the budget that has been in the previous budgets. I wanted to make this budget workbook and look as much like the previous budget workbook. Because I know some of you were new last year, and you, so you got that budget workbook. I didn't wanna introduce a completely brand-new budget workbook to everyone that looked completely different. So, I'm trying to make it as close as possible to pop. We got pretty close, I think, in my opinion. Couple changes, which I'll outline, but, yeah, I think so. The difficult part is, if you're moving money from one department to another, right, for the same project, you gotta make sure they're both in the office. And, you know, people have been sick, there's a lot of things going around, and changing temperatures, not just tearing up our roads. You know, people get sick very easily. So, if I'm moving money from one fund or one department to another, wanna make sure that they're aware of it and, you know, how it's gonna be used, so it's not spent somewhere else when it should have been earmarked for something that we discussed. So, I've talked to President of Council, Mr. Greer, Lori, about some, some things on council's budget, talking, you know, planning and some other department heads, so got some people out. So, that's a difficulty. You lose a day if someone's out and you're trying to get in touch with them.
Yeah. I was just wondering.
Okay, can't, yep.
It's my last thing, I'm sorry.
Don't apologize.
I want to thank you for bringing the questions that you've, you've brought up about this, because I think about, this was in August when we got this, and we approved the ask for the foundation in November. And I think if you had not applied the brakes, we wouldn't have had Mr. Dotson here tonight. We wouldn't have had the architect here tonight. They would not have sent the terms and the ask on Friday. Like, questioning things seemed to get the urgency. So, I appreciate you doing that. That's all.
Thank you. With nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, in a second.
One second.
We still have the committee of the whole.
I know, we still have it.
We still have the committee. Fart.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. No objection. I'd like to roll right into the committee of the whole meeting. All right. Seeing none. Today's February third, twenty twenty-five. This is a committee of the whole meeting of Barberton City Council. I call this meeting to order at eight fifteen P.M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Last I checked, there were no citizens addressing council. So, we'll hop into our committee reports. Street, sidewalk, and lighting, with Miss Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and sidewalk and lighting has nothing to report this evening, and with that, I pass.
Thank you. Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Environmental Health and Social Services met this evening, just spoke briefly about the report to the Summit County District Advisory Board, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Planning, annexation, and codes, Mr. Heidecker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, annexation, and codes is calling for a brownfield grant request from our planning director. We suspended the ten-day rule to get this on the agenda next week, and we called for the appointment of Mr. Terry Avant to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term of six years, beginning immediately, ending December thirty-first, twenty thirty. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Heidecker. City properties, parks, and recreation, Mr. Estore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Amongst all this paper, something is misplaced, I had. But we had no pending legislation, I remember. I really feel bad here, because I've lost this thing.
Do you have anything to report?
We have nothing to report. We didn't meet nothing last week. And with that, I yield back. I'm sorry.
All right. No problem. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Public welfare and safety, Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public welfare and safety met on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. We called out a committee, one piece of legislation, excuse me, it was ordinance sixty-nine, or amendment to ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-four. It's a letter from Jamie Iceman, Safety Director, requesting legislation to amend that ordinance to reflect a new total of five hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And we called that a committee. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Rules, marketing, and development, Miss Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rules, marketing, and development met on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. We had one request for legislation, and that was the letter from Lori needing us to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of our component codes of the Barberton fortified ordinances, and repealing ordinances and resolutions that are in conflict. We had our second reading of ordinance two dash twenty twenty-five as far as going into schematic drawings. And we also had Mrs. Melanie Amato from Main Street present everything that Main Street has accomplished in twenty twenty-four, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Miss Gerhart. City Utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Utilities has nothing to report. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Finance and personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, council passed ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty-five, twelve, twenty twenty-five, thirteen, twenty twenty-five, fifteen, twenty twenty-five, and had the second reading of ordinance two dash twenty twenty-five, which we also discussed this evening. We also had a few new requests for legislation this evening, in which all of the members of my committee were present, as well as all of their council members. The first piece of legislation that we are calling for was a request from Lisa Miller, requesting legislation to enter into a one-year contract with the Legal Defenders Office of Summit County. Excuse me. To provide legal representation to indigent persons in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars per case. Emergency wording and one reading requested. We also received a request from Taj Sharif, our service director, requesting legislation authorizing payment to Everbridge Incorporated for the annual NICSIL contract in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Emergency wording requested. We also have several appointments that we are calling for. I've been fine all evening. I think I'm okay. The first, these are for the Charter Review Board for twenty twenty-five. The first is Julie Miller, and Nina Angelo, Carol Frye, Dallas Moore, Eddie Lawson, Charlie Reese. And we are, we have a hold on Tom Harnin, just want to double-check his status. We also discussed ordinance number two, twenty twenty-five, at great length regarding the Haas and Staub Architects' contract for schematic design budgets coming this week. We adjourned at eight fourteen. With nothing else, I will pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our committee reports. I don't have nothing to report this evening. Is there anything from the body? Anything from department heads? Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of updates. In terms of the elevator, we're about twelve days out. Did order a new part. It's being flown in. So, to get the part here and to have it installed, about twelve days. It's about thirty thousand dollars for a new drive. We're, looked at rebuilt models, and we just don't wanna, we're not satisfied with the rebuilt model. So, spend the money now, make sure it's done, done right. It's an old elevator, so trying to find one was a hard, hard task. But about thirty, thirty thousand dollars gives us about twelve days to get that part in and install it. Kind of back to the temperature and the roads, you know, this is gonna happen all week, it looks like. And that black ice is a real thing. It gets cold at night, freezes, and very thin layer of ice, and hasn't had time to warm up and turn into water yet. So, just be very, very careful. Obviously, our roads are taking a beating, water lines, and it's just not here. New pavement is buckling everywhere. Talked to mayors throughout Summit, Stark, and Portage County, Medina County, and it's happening everywhere. These, these, it's not like when I was younger, and it was cold from Thanksgiving to March. It, this thawing, this freezing and thawing is really bad. But the crews are out there, and, you know, things change very quickly. As I emailed you today, the word from our street superintendent was, he left some messages, and they weren't gonna open, a different asphalt plant wasn't gonna open up until April. Knew another asphalt plant called back in that short time between sending the email and coming to council, saying that they would open up this week. So, that's good news. And just lastly, we continue to meet with a lot of different businesses, existing businesses looking to expand, and new businesses looking to call Barberton Home. So, hopefully, more updates coming soon on those, those expansions or new businesses. So, any questions? Yes?
One of the questions that keeps popping up online right now is, what's the three-dollar lighting fee on the water bill?
So, state law allows us to charge that as a utility, so that pays for, we pay Edison for the streetlights, for all the lights, and whenever they're changed out, we pay for that.
Like the light bulbs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If the pole goes down, we pay for that.
So, this goes towards the poles and the light bulbs?
And the energy to-
Okay. Like the utility bill for lighting up streetlights.
Yeah.
Oh, that makes sense. Okay.
So, if you see a street light out, you know, we're paying for it, whether it works or not. So, the faster you can get it reported, either to us or get online yourself and report it, the faster they can change it out. If you see a pink ribbon around the post, the pole, that signifies that someone, that pink ribbon is from Edison, that someone has marked it. The tough thing is, not everyone, because they change the poles out, the lights out at night. Sometimes they don't remove the ribbon. So, there's one down on Coventry that I marked a few weeks ago, and I called up because it was still marked with the pink ribbon. Went by early this morning, the light was working.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna take it off.
I try to drive around at nighttime to report.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
My question was, are there any updates that you can share about the former Rite Aid at Johnson's Corners?
So, you know, that's one thing. I wanna meet with council one-on-one. Met with the owner a few times. We've sent some leads to the owner, and let them make that connection if it would work out. He did contact me and said that Dollar General was looking at, talking to him about it. So, I told him how there's a moratorium on Dollar Generals. This is more of a market Dollar General, but still, it's Dollar General.
More groceries, though.
Yeah, and which would be great, having it, but we have moratorium on dollar stores. So, we looked at that, and, you know, in the meantime, the Dollar General on the north end of town has had a lot of issues that we've had to deal with. A lot of issues. So, we're still working with them, but that's one question I wanna talk to council individually about, is, once the development code is done, how do you feel about the moratoriums that are already in place and continuing those or altering them? You know, you've got a building up there, eleven thousand square feet, roughly, great, strong building, solid. A small grocery store would work great there. It's conservative food desert, and I've been working with the Health Department for a number of years on trying to get some more fresh fruits and meat and things like that. But is a Dollar General market store the right fit?
Right.
So...
And do you have updates on the existing Dollar General in Worcester? Because last, I, I know that it had closed due to no water. Is that correct?
No water, possible, some other things going on. I drove by this morning, and it appeared that the red placard was off the window, but I'm not sure if they took it off, or they're in compliance now. I'm not sure.
Okay. Just curious.
Yes?
I don't know if I direct this to you or Mr. Tiedeki.